Please rise with the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and everlasting God, who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Don't believe them, Jim.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Belusko.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Ms. Gilbert.
President.
Mr. Merritt.
Here.
And Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Also in attendance tonight is Controller Darren Snyder, Administrator Ted Wampel, Assistant City Attorney Maureen Collins, Human Resources Director Nicole Ference, Director of Operations Butch Frady, Director of Planning and Zoning Bill Harris, Finance Director Brett Kittrick, Deputy Fire Chief Alan Clappett, Police Chief Margaret Hersella Lindacki, Director of Health Services Hank Radoski, Director of OCD Kurt Sauer, Community Sport Director Joe Redano, IT Director Lou Lau, Capital Projects Program Manager Joyce Zakowski, Junior Counsel Member Robert McClay, Assistant City Clerk Catherine Payne, Administrative Assistant Lisa San Filippo. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on legislation pending before council tonight?
Jim, what legislation is it?
Everything that's on the agenda. Mr. Zuckermin, Zuckerwar, I think you have comments on something that were...I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
I'm Emily Zuckerwar. We're together.
You just repeat it for the record.
I'm Emily Zuckerwar. He's Julius Zuckerwar. It's in regards to the dog park issue. We had initially come to City Hall in regards to a lock being put on during the day to keep certain dogs out. However, now it's going to wind up that a dog...this is our dog. She loves that park. As of right now, she's not fixed, and we are responsible enough to keep her home when she goes into heat. However, there are dogs showing up to that park that are aggressive and have been fixed. In fact, one actually got loose from its owner on its leash and attacked my friend's dog. There's another one that shows up that already has two police reports for biting people and is still...will still be allowed in that park. That I see as a problem. I want to make sure that my girl, our girl, is still allowed in that park until we can get her fixed. We've had a few issues show up at the house that every time we've made the appointment or tried to, something's happened. We just got my car back from the transmission. The money I spent on that transmission was supposed to go to get her fixed. She's very well behaved. Unless you're drunk and stoned, because she was an abuse victim from a drug house. Unless you're drunk and stoned and acting ridiculous, she's harmless. I want to make sure she still goes to that park as long as she's not in heat, because there's the same amount of chance of her getting pregnant at the dog park as Kirby Park, especially if somebody's dog gets loose over there. And it can happen on our street, too. I said, we just want to make sure she still goes there. What do you want to say on that?
Only thing I want to say is...
Your name, sir?
My name?
Just repeat your name, sir, please.
Only thing I want to say is, if you do pass this spayed and neutered ordinance for Hollenbeck's Dog Park, it also has to be passed for all the dog parks in Pennsylvania, not just one.
Not just one. Also, we are working on...there's been a number of us that have bet from the dog park, and we are trying to put Wyoming Valley Dog Association back together so we can run that park properly. I don't want to see the city step in and take care of something so certain dogs that are friendly and have not had a chance to get fixed can still go to that park, as long as the owners are responsible, because the sign outside that park right now says, "Enter at your own risk. You're responsible for what happens to your dog," and no aggressive dog should be in that park. So I don't see why my dog, as long as she's not in heat, cannot go to that park. But someone whose dog is one police report away from being put down can go in there as long as it's on a leash. It's wrong. I said, she absolutely loves this. And every two weeks, she goes almost every day to the park, and then every two weeks after she's done at the park, we go to the pet store. She lives to go to that park. She has friends in that park. She plays with the people. She plays with the dogs, and she's friendly.
Can I ask how old is your dog?
She will be four next month.
Four years, okay.
She is four years old, as of December 6th. And like I said, I want to make sure that dogs like her, who are friendly and have not been fixed yet, can still enter as long as the owner of that dog is responsible and takes responsibility for their dog's actions. And if you're going to allow an aggressive dog in there, why can't someone like her be in?
Just one last thing. If the city does take over this dog park, we're afraid that we're going to lose it. And that means if the city takes over, that means the SPCA gets whatever's in the damn park. So if the SPCA takes over, we might as well say goodbye to Hollenbeck's Dog Park.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Questions? I think the...maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. The language that's in this ordinance pretty much follows the standard for dog parks everywhere. I would...I don't know if...
I'm not sure where...
It's not necessarily a standard.
Okay.
Because the spayed and neuter doesn't always guarantee the behavior of the dog is going to be better.
Right.
Most of that depends on how the dog was raised and the training.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on that? Any other pending legislation, sir?
I just signed up. My name is Curtis Muffley, and I do use the Hollenbeck Dog Park myself. And it's just like I have Alaska Malamute, which is a fairly big dog, and I've had three different vets tell me to not give him neutered before 18 months to two years, because it causes hip displacement and it causes cancer. And this is what we...I think we have to be looked at as the board and even our owners. We have to look at what is right for the dog. I mean, this is the first dog park I've been to that had sprayed a neutered dog's owner. I mean, I've been to two other local parks in the area that they do not have that sign up there. So I mean, I'm all for that. And also, you know, if you stop and think about it, there's also discrimination towards the other dogs, that other people who use it that can't...don't have a sprayed or neutered dog that belongs in the city. If you're going to, like the previous person said, you're going to ban just sprayed, non-sprayed neutered dogs there, you got to ban them through all the city parks, whether they're on the leash or not, because that's all going to be affected by it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Barrett, could we table this, have Maureen look into it some more to make sure we get it right?
Yes. I think that's an excellent idea. Mr. Ryan, do we need to take a vote to remove it, or can we just pull our motion?
To remove this?
To table it.
Table. Yeah. Just move it, or remove it. That's the simplest way to do it, instead of tabling it. We'll just remove it from the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
There's your John.
Anyone else on...oh, John, I'm sorry.
The dog orders. I just want to know, how are you guys going to police that? Like, how is that, like...like, you pass an ordinance like that, and, you know, it's not...I don't think it's enforceable. Like, I'm not saying there's anything...like, I haven't read through the ordinance myself, but just hearing what some of the people have problems with it, I was going to also ask to table it. Like, I just want to know, how will the city enforce it?
I think if they have a complaint, more or less, that would be when they would enforce it, to my knowledge.
I think there have been complaints in the past about certain people bringing certain types of dogs there that were causing problems, and it's been addressed through the Parks Department.
Like, I just think that it might be...I don't know if it's spayed or neutered issue, or if it's just a dog behavioral issue. You know what I mean? Like, people trained...don't have their dogs properly trained, and, you know, things happen, you know? And then it affects people like this, because they just want to enjoy the park.
Well, as you heard, Mr. Brooks wanted this further research, which I agree. Thank you. Anyone else on any pending legislation? I know we have kind of a short agenda, sir.
I'm not sure where this fits in your agenda about the budget.
We're not...it's not on the agenda tonight, but you're certainly welcome to speak about it in the public session.
No.
No, in the public session. Did you fill out one of the forms?
Oh, okay.
We'll get to you. Okay.
Okay. First order of official business is a consent agenda resolutions. Motion seconded, vote.
Motion, Mr. Merritt. Second. Mr. Belusko.
Okay. Mr. Belusko.
Yes.
Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
Motion passes. And next is the...well, the ordinance is just removed from the agenda, so there is no vote on that, pending review by Assistant City Attorney Maureen Collins.
Thank you.
Mr. Belusko, do you have anything for us this evening?
Yes. I'd like to thank you all of council for approval of Solomon Creek project. I know we had little time to prepare and get the facts, but I wanted to let council know how this all started. I know you're not aware of how this all began from the beginning. As you know, it's my district. I was notified by a resident that lives along the creek. He sent me a text message on Monday, October 24th, and he sent photos along with it. Obviously, I looked at the photos. I immediately emailed Butch Frady, our operations director. I jumped in my car, and I drove right down to Solomon Creek. I saw the area. I was shocked. I was scared. Within 15 minutes, Mr. Frady emailed me back and said that he will be right down there. If you saw the photos, they're a bit scary. If you see it in person, it was very scary. That wall's ready to go. And I applaud council for not knowing all the facts, but taking Butch Frady's advice. Butch, after he saw it, within a day, I got another email from Butch telling me that the engineers will be in the creek tomorrow morning. And the next day, they were there. I went down around 10 o'clock, I believe. It was a rainy, cold, miserable, windy day. And here's these two engineers. You have to vision this. Two engineers in the middle of the creek with hip boots on, rain gear, measuring tapes, doing whatever engineers do, stomping through the water. I kind of laughed to myself, and I thought, oh, they really know. This is serious. Butch grabbed the bull by the horns there. Next thing I know, I find out there's a meeting here in City Hall with Senator Udichak, Bishinsky, EPA, engineers. There was a multitude of players. Tony was there, 25 people maybe, through the state, state people. Tony came into the meeting to Mayor George, and he greeted everybody and thanked everybody, all the elected officials to be there, being there. Those people from Corps of Army Engineers, you name it, they were there. Who he immediately turns the meeting over to Butch Frady. That's the kind of guy we have working in this city. Our Director of Operations, Butch Frady, he took care of everything. He handled everything. I asked Joyce Zakowski, Major Projects Director, to keep me informed of anything. She constantly emailed me. I knew everything about the project as it was going on. I was watching Butch run through hoops to get this out to bid in front of council inside of three weeks. That's not done in government. We got...we thanked the council for approving it so we can move forward and keep the residents of South Wilkes-Barre safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good job. Now, we've seen this time and time again, and even when there's an emergency, how quickly they can react and stabilize the situation. So, and I'm sure they're keeping an eye on it and keeping their fingers crossed for the weather and hoping there wasn't a problem, and we're still doing that. But I know they have a contingency plan until the repairs are made, so all good.
Yep.
So thank you for taking care of it. Anything else, Mike?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Brooks?
Yes. I have questions related to the budget and healthcare costs, or either Brad or Ted or Nicole. Massachusetts recently passed legislation that pushed employees of municipalities that were 65 years and older onto Medicare to save the municipality money. Is that something that is in the realm of possibility here? How many employees do we have over 65? And do we know a number that we could do and save? Or is that something that Harrisburg would have to do for us, since it was a state thing in Massachusetts? But it's just something that I would think that undoubtedly would save us money by pushing someone over to Medicare and probably even saving money if we paid their supplement healthcare as well.
So retirees still on Medicare?
No, still employees who work for cities who are over 65.
They stay up. I think that's a part of the bargain. Yeah, the collective bargain, right? So I mean, it's something you can look at, but it's a little bit of a bargain.
Okay.
They can look into it.
Right. Okay. Sounds good. And another question for Butch. How does residents go about requesting streetlights? And if there's, you know, a need for a streetlight at a particular corner? Is it something they just pass on to you? Do they have to go through a traffic committee, or?
No, they can make a request through our department or other departments. You can call Charles Mitchell, send it down. How that works, so everybody understands, it's one thing to ask for a streetlight. However, it's a challenge in some situations for it to actually be installed.
Right.
PPL has the final say on these matters. If there's a neutral line in the area, and they feel that they can hook up effectively, they'll give us the okay. We install the light as we own it, they have to hook them up.
Okay.
But we can certainly make a request.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. McClay, our junior council member. I'm sorry I missed you right up front.
Yeah. Just that we're doing a charity after Thanksgiving for the holidays of Christmas. That's all.
And what is that? What are we doing for?
I'm not sure yet. We're still thinking about it.
TBD.
It's in the works.
Yes.
All right. Well, that's good. Thank you. Okay. And Ms. Gilbert.
Just two smaller things here. On South Main Street by Boss Cogs and Barnes &amp; Noble, I noticed that the...on each of the crosswalks, there used to be watch for pedestrians signs, and that it's state law to yield pedestrians. I've noticed they've been gone for a couple of weeks. I'm not sure why. Does anyone know?
I can only suspect that pranksters, colossals, will take...
Okay. All of them are gone.
We have extra...we want to install them.
And then on South Sherman Street around GAR, that block of South Sherman, there's been a lot of issues with people parking on the sidewalk there, specifically after school, around 2:30, 3 o'clock. I was just wondering if we could get more parking enforcement up there.
Do you know if anyone's called 911 on the observant?
I'm not sure. But can we send maybe a cruiser down there?
If you can send a particular on it, we'll get somebody up there tomorrow.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's random.
Right. But I mean, just send a particular, and we'll make sure they're dispatched today.
Okay. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merritt?
Yeah, a couple things for Butch. Butch, you...we spoke briefly before the work session on the cleaning of the creeks up in my district. Is that on schedule? Has it been started?
They're actually up there doing work below North Main Street right now.
Okay.
Yes, they have been. They will continue to do above the merger of two bridges there, behind the golf course and up toward the oil run.
Okay. Okay. Did you have a ballpark date when you think that may be done? Two weeks?
I can actually... I'll leave it there first thing tomorrow morning.
Just send me an email tomorrow. Okay. Sidney and Coon did have some damage from the heavy equipment from Leeward when they rebuilt the bridge up there. Do we have any recourse to go after them to make the necessary repairs to the road?
I'm not sure. I will check to see if it hasn't been closed out yet. And yes, actually, the contract has a one-year construction warranty, so I would say probably we can.
And how would I get something like that started? Just have the city inspect it first and see?
I'll look at it tomorrow when I'm up that way. I'll take the photos and put it on the ECMS website so Penn dot inspectors can check.
Okay. One last thing. I read in the paper where next week is the last week for leaf pickup and yard waste?
Well, as the schedule, in the past, we've extended it when weather permitted. I'll speak to the administration and see how...
If we could get another week or so, because half of these aren't even down yet.
Yeah.
Then it clogged the storm drains and caused a flooding, so if you could look into that.
Okay. I'll think tomorrow about that.
That's it for me.
Thank you. All right. And I don't have any else, Jim, so. Linda Joseph.
Good evening. As president of the Rowing Mill Hill Residents Association for the past eight months, I have presided over several monthly meetings for our residents. We listen as they continue to express their same frustrations month after month regarding issues that they have called about into specific departments responsible for their particular problem. They do not receive any calls back or even acknowledgement of their request for help. Some have come to City Hall in person to no avail. Others have provided information to their councilperson, who passes it on to the proper channels. When Mayor George campaigned to make our neighborhoods a priority, the residents were ready and willing to respond and do our part, as is evident, in the formation of several resident associations throughout the city with the guidance of council members. The most dominant area always discussed are issues regarding code enforcement violations, whether it involves proper permits issued, building code violations, blighted properties, et cetera. Another area are issues regarding health department violations. The residents, those who you now want to pay a 30 mil property tax increase starting in 2017, are disillusioned and have given up trying to help the city provide a better neighborhood for all of us. I have heard from residents in Rowing Mill Hill, as well as from those in other areas of the city, who all have the same experience of not receiving any satisfaction or action on problems in their neighborhoods. My understanding is there are only two code enforcement inspectors for the entire city. How can only two people respond to all the complaints or issues related to that department and effectively make progress in resolving these ongoing problems? You are asking the residents to pay more, but will we see our money allocated to resources that will help improve our neighborhoods? Will we see more code enforcement inspectors hired? Or will our residents continue to be frustrated and apathetic when it comes to their diminished quality of life? Thank you.
And I appreciate the feedback. And I can't speak for all of them, but the majority, and I would say most of them, actually, the people that call, we do address.
That's a joke.
Please.
Okay.
Personally, you know that we call, and I make sure that you're called back.
I have not personally had any issues. This was the residents.
Right. We've talked about there's been some issues at the business.
Right.
Right? We have addressed.
Right. Absolutely.
We do assign all the different problems out to all the different departments, and I always ask for the people to get back to me if they're not answered and they're not addressed. And on occasion, we do get some calls because they're not addressed in as quick a fashion as people want them done. I get that.
Right.
I get that. We have actually started addressing the blighted issue more aggressively now, as we have put together in City Hall a blighted task force, a blighted property task force. So there's a whole bunch of moving parts that go with that from...I mentioned before at previous meetings, doing land banks, and we're now compiling the list of the blighted properties, and we're going to go after the landlords. We're going to have warrants served for people with unpaid fines. We're doing all of that more aggressively than we've ever done before. So keep the, you know, the concerns coming, and, you know, certainly, if people know that if they reach out to us, they will get a response. They need to let me know. If a certain department is called, or a certain act was supposed to be taken and was not, and I have people, I've always said, they can call me, and they know that.
So if there are complaints, or we hear residents, you know, saying that they've called several times, they've got no satisfaction, not even a call back, do you want me to have them call you directly?
Sure. The mayor's hotline would probably be the first place to go, but if it's an ongoing concern, then I'm going to need specifics, and we will certainly address it. But I will tell you, and I will stand behind the entire staff at City Hall, that, you know, if we had more code enforcement officers, and I get all that, but again, budget constraints being what they are, right? But we do get to every complaint, and we do try to address them the best we can. But if they're not, certainly we need to know about that. We're not perfect, but we are trying.
Okay. And we will do whatever we can to continue to help, obviously, but it's just every month, it's the same issues. It's not different issues. It's the same thing they've called over and over and over. So if I continue to hear them, then I'm going to call you directly, and I'll pass it on myself, too.
Correct. And sometimes it's the properties are repeat offenders.
Yes.
So they will be the repeat callers, and we get that.
But these are not...these are situations that need to be handled.
But I need specifics. I need to know who they spoke to.
Okay.
We will address it. Sometimes people will call, and they'll complain that, you know, somebody didn't respond, and then we check call logs, and they really didn't. They meant to call, but they didn't.
Okay.
You know, but if they're talking to people and there's no response, I need to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Just out of curiosity, how many code enforcement officers do we have? Is it true that we only have two?
Two. And we use a third party for commercials.
Okay. Did we ever think about moving employees to these, different City Hall employees to these positions, to revenue generating positions?
It's something we can consider, but right now, I will tell you that every department right now is pretty much stressed to the max to the work that they're doing. So to take work off of somebody, to try to give it to somebody else when they're already stressed, is something that is very difficult.
Ted, if I may. Aren't...don't we have a few in the health code department, code enforcement officers that are also rental inspectors?
Health inspectors and also doing rental inspections.
Okay. So we have more than two?
Well, she asked for code.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anything else?
Building code.
Yeah.
Eric Oliver.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Your name for the record, please.
My name is Eric Oliver. I'm a resident homeowner here in Wilkes-Barre. I'm a registered nurse, worked for 35 years as an RN. I'm currently working with the VA Medical Center for 10 years. I've been here in Wilkes-Barre for five years, and in those five years, I'm a taxpayer, paying salaries for people in this building and other areas of Wilkes-Barre as well. And I was rather dismayed to find out the amount of tax increase being proposed. And in my 10 years of being with the VA, I've seen one increase in pay. I don't know where the extra money is going to come from. In the next five years, I expect to be retired, and I'll be on a fixed income. And I'm hoping and praying that the city of Wilkes-Barre doesn't tax me out of my home. So I wanted to go on record for this and show that I am opposed to such a large increase.
Okay.
Thank you.
Comments? Anyone? Okay. Thank you, sir. Comments? Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
There are many people, sir, like you, as you are, many people in the same position as you are. We can understand that.
Thank you. Larry Singleton?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Larry Singleton, Wilkes-Barre, South Wilkes-Barre. I'm here, president of the NAACP. Two issues I want to address today and why not do that particularly want to be labor on, I do want to reiterate the NAACP position in regards to Michael Luther's containment holiday as the position is that the city hall be closed. In October, I think the issue was brought up as an alternative. And in your work session thereafter, also was brought up as an alternative to if the city is, city hall is not closed. Just wanted to go on record that our position is we still feel that city hall should be closed on that particular day. The next issue I wanted to address was ban of the box resolution that I think we have before you. And that issue regards individuals who have committed a crime, who thoroughly has paid their duty to society for that crime and getting back, working back in the workforce. And asking that, have you been committed a crime, would that be removed from the application until they get a face-to-face interview? And is that questions that could be raised? So I will go through the resolution and ask the council to adopt it if it sees fit. The National Association of Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP, the nation's oldest, largest, and most widely recognized grassroots-based civil rights organization. Formed in 1909 by a multiracial group of progressive thinkers, the NAACP is a nonprofit organization established with the objective of ensuring the political, education, and social, economic equality of people of color. For over 102 years, the NAACP has challenged this nation to uphold its promise to equal opportunity towards the goals of eliminating racial prejudice and removing all barriers of racial discrimination through democratic process. Whereas, ban the box called for questions about past convictions to be moved from job application to the face-to-face interview phase of the hiring process. And whereas, often, once incarcerated people return home, find employers willing to give them a chance to work and performing difficult. And whereas, placing the box on the job application makes successful re入 entries more difficult by both discouraging formerly incarcerated people from applying for jobs and increasing the likelihood their application would not be considered. And whereas, when the interview process is the moment when formerly incarcerated people are first asked about conviction history, they are more likely to be hired. And whereas, the Wilkes-Barre NAACP supporting eliminating public and private employers from asking whether someone has been convicted or thoroughly from employment application. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wilkes-Barre branch of the NAACP encourage both public and private employers to ban the box by removing the question about whether someone has incarcerated, been, or convicted of a crime from the application to the interview phase of hiring. And be it finally resolved that Wilkes-Barre branch of the NAACP support the national standards of job application by banning the box being included in Section 714 of the National Crime Commission Act of 2009. And this is also, has been also adopted by the state as also, as ban that also. So we're asking the city to also approve or adopt that or consider adopting as well.
Comments?
I know we spoke about this when we had the diversity roundtable. And I did research it and I saw a few other municipalities adopted as well. I have a few drafts on my computer at home from other municipalities. So I can send that over to you and Tim if you'd like to review it.
Sure, yeah.
And recently, I think last week, Wilkes and a couple of universities also had a career day and they also eliminated that process where they had formerly so individuals who was incarcerated came in to give another chance also to enter workforce also. So they're behind, some of the local establishments in this area are behind the whole process as well.
That's good, Eric.
I don't know if you would know the answer to this and maybe our attorneys would best be able to answer that, but as Beth said, a few municipalities have passed this ordinance or similar ordinance, but that's not going to change it. What level does that have to go before this actually does become law or does take effect? Obviously, what we do here in the city of Wilkes-Barre is not going to impact what other employees outside of the area. Is this something that can be initiated statewide or does this have to go?
The city legislature has already passed it, Harrisburg has passed this.
Right, but it seems to me it should be something that's at a higher level, like at a state level or to prohibit that from happening across, not just in certain municipalities. And we've seen that many times at different, you know what I'm saying? I'm not disagreeing with it. I think it's great. I think it really is, but I don't know what level it needs to be enacted. Do we have the authority or the power to regulate somebody from Wilkes-Barre township from doing it? We don't.
But the city of Wilkes-Barre, you can do that. You can yourself.
But it would seem to me that it would be much more advantageous if it was something that was done at the state level, and I'm sure you're pursuing that, or even better at the national level so that that does change. Similar to the other, similar to the LGBT ordinance that we passed, it would be much more effective if it was across the state or even better across the country rather than just here. I'm agreeing with, I'm agreeing totally with it. We will entertain putting this together, but I just seem to feel that it would be better if it was done at a higher level. And I'm sure your organization is looking into that and I commend you for doing that. I think people do make mistakes. They should not be penalized for the rest of their life. I agree with you there. And should it be at least afforded the opportunity for an interview anyway.
On the national level, we have embraced and adopted this. Okay, so.
So if it's national, if it's federal law, then we would have to comply with it.
Right, it becomes individual, individual. As you say, municipality, municipality, cities, or what have you, township, what have you, they would have their, even a company itself, even my previous employer would hire individuals who was incarcerated, depending on what degree of the crime was itself. So that's like giving itself an opportunity. So we can reduce that recidivism by giving these individuals now an opportunity because often they get out there and no one's is willing to give them an interview or hire. At least, if you at least have that face-to-face, you can maybe, there's something bad about that particular individual that may generate, you offer them a job considering on what their crime was and they show some type of remorse or what have you. And that was very profound for this seminar that went to this career day that was just held like a couple of days ago. And I think it's at, I'm not sure, was it Wilkes University, but a couple of universities that came all together and had a career day, all these criminals.
Right. I think what we're going to, I think if it's okay with you, we're going to ask our solicitors to look into this and see if we can put this in an ordinance form in support of it.
Sure.
And if you'd be so kind to do that, that would be great.
Sure.
At that point, we'll move forward with it.
Okay.
Thank you. You have it. Okay. Any more discussion on that? Elaine Picar? Good evening.
Hi. My name is Elaine Picar. I'm just going to give you a little background of myself. My family has been living in north end of Wilkes-Barre for five generations. That goes to show you I love Wilkes-Barre. My great-grandparents had built many of the homes down in the Brookside area. My grandparents owned businesses like stores, general stores. My parents even owned S&amp;W years ago when I was small. We love Wilkes-Barre. I've been in my home for 46 years. I live on North Washington Street. It was a nice neighborhood. All neighborhoods are going down. I understand that. But there's a family behind us that blasts their music from morning till night. They dance on their porch roofs. They, I know the board of health was called because they had more than 50 bags of garbage in their yard. They were burning garbage in their yard. I mean, this family is really always, we used to enjoy our back porch. We used to have our lunch and our dinner, it's a big back porch. We never even go on it anymore because that music is blasting. We've called the police many a times, but there's noise ordinance, 10 o'clock, you can blast your music till 10 o'clock. My neighbors, I've asked them, they says we've called at least dozens of times. Okay, well, we have front porch too. So we go on the front porch. New neighbors from two different houses, they're not from our area, they're renting, probably the owners are out of state. They're blasting their music. So now we're in our house with our doors and our windows shut and you can still hear that boom, 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 boom. Okay, I've been paying my taxes, my grandparents, my parents, my great-grandparents have been paying taxes to Wilkes-Barre. Are we to move out as taxpayers because we can't even sit on our porches? I think there should be a noise ordinance of some sort 24 hours. Up in Topianna, they have it. My granddaughter lives up there. You get fined if your music is loud or even if you're yelling. Down the back where I sit, their music is so loud that they're yelling to one another just to hear each other. They have cars in their driveway with the doors open, so their music is blasting all over. This is how we live after 46 years in my home. We have to sit in our house with our doors and windows shut. We have central air in our house, but we have to put an air conditioner in our bedroom window just to block out some of the noise. That's it. Please do something about this noise.
We do have a noise ordinance. And as long as it fits loud and disturbing, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief.
Yes, sir.
They could be cited any time of day.
There's no hours.
Yeah, there are no hours.
Well, how come they're not?
Ma'am, is your information on your question, your statement sheet and your phone contact information?
I'll give you numbers. Yes, I have called, my neighbors have called me dozens of times.
If it's okay, I'll look into that and I will call you myself personally tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're going to grab your phone number here. Thanks, Chief. Chief, there isn't a time where you.
There's hours. If she can testify.
Alice Dietz?
Good evening. Hi, my name is Alice Dietz and I live in the same neighborhood as Elaine. A lot of the houses have been made into apartments, they were single homes before, section eight housing. And then there's also the homes that are rent to own. Now, I don't know how they do their checks on the people or even if checks are done. People refuse to cut their grass. They don't cut the hedges. They don't break the leaves up. They don't shovel the snow off or anything. And there's nothing that could be done about it. You ask them to do it, they don't want to do it. We've got cars up there that are illegally parked. We have a handicap parking spot in front of our home. Someone parks two feet this way, somebody parks two feet this way. The cops are called, they say that they're not parked far enough to watch you. But you get one in front of you and one in the back of you and nobody is cited for it, yet we pay for that parking spot. There's an illegal car in front by a fireplug. The license plate plus the sticker is illegal. The police have been called on it, the car still remains there. Up at 381, the house was sold up there, they left a car behind. They moved about four months ago. They left the car behind with a for sale sign on it. It's parked in a handicap sign that the license plates don't match. And there's nothing that could be done about it. They supposedly know someone from City Hall who's letting everybody do this. Now, we're all taxpayers. Our neighborhood has gone down so far, you just want that 13% tax increase. There's a house across the street from me that's a beautiful home and it's valued at over $98,000. The people can't even get $38,000 for it. And we're expected to pay? And what do we have? Just blighted neighborhoods and different places that's going down where you're actually embarrassed to say you live in the city of Wilkes-Barre. I know that's how I feel. When nothing is done, nobody cares, just who gets a raise and who they could hire. I'm sorry I feel that way, but that is how I do feel.
Ma'am, excuse me, ma'am, I have a question. When was the last time they called and they said that they couldn't do anything because they were, you know, blocking the front and blocking the back of the park was watching?
Different times of the day and night, called 911.
Do you know how recently it was that the officers came and said they can't?
We just gave up on it. But we heard on the scanner where the cop said, it's only two feet over, it's not blocking it. So then he said, somebody parked behind you, they come in two feet.
Lisa, can I get her information as well? I have the department enforcement up there first thing in the morning.
But even the cars that's been there for a while, they say up on 381, that nobody seems to care.
I'll have somebody up in the morning.
Going to get your phone number as well.
Go.
I think that's, make sure, I think your address is on there, is that not right?
Yes.
Mrs. Dietz? What we will do, and your neighbor Joey Reddano is our community action team, and he's sitting right there, he will talk to me about going down there and checking all this out.
Yeah, code enforcement has been up there, but they look at the front yard. They don't go in the back. But I mean, like, there was, you'd be able to go watch the fireworks over Kirby Park, but these rent to own in section eight houses, the trees are all grown, you got a forest the next door.
You got it.
Thank you.
I know we've had conversations before about this, about what we could do if we did have more code enforcement officers. I know one thing that could be done is code enforcement officers having certain routes that they take on a regular basis because I think that there are so many streets, like these women's streets, where people just forget about them. And I think residents, they continually report things over and over again, they do just give up. And I think that it would be beneficial if we could have code enforcement have certain routes that they take on a daily basis just to be a little more proactive in reporting some of these problems so that it doesn't take somebody coming to a council meeting for something to be done.
Anything you can get about how the cars that walk in the streets?
We're still looking at the blighted property ordinance. That's not, I know the committee is going to say it as well.
Yeah, we're taking off suggestions on that and, you know, we, again, working with the resources that we have, certainly we welcome all kinds of suggestions, but again, it's working with the resources that we have available. We'll sort of bring it up at our blighted property task force.
Angel Mathis?
Good evening. Good evening, Angel Mathis, Wilkes-Barre. It's nice to see everyone because I haven't been here for a while. And Chief Lindicki and Mr. Wampel, it was nice seeing you outside at a community event because I hardly recognize either one of you so dressed up so nicely. The one thing, one of the issues I have is no smoking in the intermodal. I know it's like I'm trying to beat it to death, but one of the, a few of the spotters at the intermodal have a problem because if you're waiting for certain buses in the intermodal, you don't see any signs. And so people are lighting up, but they kindly go over and tell them there's no smoking. So a few of them asked me if I could bring it up at a city council meeting that on the post opposite of the intermodal that you place no smoking signs. The second issue I have is the traffic on River and West Market. I volunteer at Senior Center and several people who walk over the bridge continually complain that when they try and cross the street to go from, I'm not sure if it's the who, but well, by Kirby Park to come over closer to the square, there is a lot of traffic violations and it's becoming a very dangerous place to cross, even though there is a new traffic pattern. But what typically happens is people pull through, and it's mainly at rush hour that they pull through the red lights and through the. the red lights and through the crosswalks. And also at guard insurance, they actually stop the traffic to allow their employees to come out of the parking lot where their security guard literally comes into the middle of the street and stops the traffic. Can something be done about that? Now, my last issue is close to my heart only because I am actually one of the residents that consistently called for medical assistance with fire and medics. And one thing that I've noticed is the last few times that I've called an ambulance, I've actually received the bill. And when I called my insurance, my daughter's insurance worker, case manager, she pretty much said that it was an issue with coding. The coding and her condition because she's one... She has a very rare and obscure condition in which she's one of 8,000 in the United States that have it. But the problem that we have is when the... When it's not properly coded or even properly... The proper diagnosis or information isn't relayed to the hospital, it causes a problem. And one thing that we've actually learned after talking to our medical team is that now we both have medical alerts. And the new medical alerts are a lot different than the normal ones because a lot of people are used to seeing the metal bracelets and the metal charms. However, to make them more affordable, there are several companies that are doing little bands like this. And what happens is it comes with an application where fire and medics can actually get the application on the iPads that they carry with them. And it comes with the QRS code that if you scan the QRS code, it will actually bring up her entire medical history. And it would make things a lot simpler for the medics who are responding to us as well as the hospital who is trying to get the information. So what I'm here to actually ask you to do is to try and implement training because these applications... These bands are sold at many different pharmacies and retailers. But the actual applications are sold... Are actually free of charge on iTunes Store, Google Play Store, and also Microsoft Xbox Store. And so just to bring in new technology, which I'm more than sure the city can actually upgrade to at no cost. And it will actually help the public.
On the smoking signs, you brought that to my attention a few days ago. I didn't get a chance to look at it, but maybe we don't have to. If we can have somebody from the intermodal take a look. There's a need for some additional signs there apparently on the other end of it. I'm sure you heard it. I know there are signs, but apparently there's some areas that are a little thin on. The River and Market Street situation. I know that was all just redone. Can we have the traffic committee or maybe somebody? Can somebody take a look at that situation real closely?
I could get some officers there to monitor as well. But I have a question. With the guard insurance, is that at one specific time of the day?
Different times. It's different times of the day. But specifically, you find it more during rush hour, which is between 4:00 and 5:00?
So I can give them a call in addition if you're doing that.
It's about 4:30.
Okay. Yeah, well, I think it's not legal.
Tell the boss.
We'll take care of that.
Chief Clapp, you're probably familiar with this coding situation. Maybe you're not.
First, I'll start with the medical bands. Angel did stop me in the street and informed me about the medical bands that her daughter wore and many other residents are wearing now. That day, I did inform all of our personnel about the bands. And I know a few of them did download the app. We don't have smartphones that are issued by the city, so it's up to the individual if they're gonna download that app or not. It is very helpful if we have that information. And I'll stress to our personnel that they should be looking for this information. Not only helps us out, it also helps the patient.
Yeah, because the only reason I bring it up is because with the wrong code, I get billed directly and it doesn't go to my insurance. And then I'm fighting with them. And then I'm fighting with you for something that's paid for.
Right, as far as the medical coding billing, over the past year, private insurance industry, Medicare, Medicaid have changed their coding drastically. I'm not sure the reason for it. I don't know if they're trying to pay out less or just it's just an overall change that they made. But we do have our billing company in, coming in to instruct all of our paramedics on the proper way to do the coding on their reports. Like I said, this has changed over the past year and things have changed quite a bit. And we've got a lot of feedback from patients receiving bills that aren't being paid. I've got family members that aren't having their bills paid because their coding wrong, not only by the ambulance but by hospitals.
Right, because they code it based on what you come in with.
Correct. So we do have our billing company coming in to instruct the paramedics on the most efficient way to code. That way, they'll be paid properly and the reimbursements will come back the way they should come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else, ma'am? Tony Mathis?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tony Mathis, and I'm from Wilkes-Barre. I'm here on behalf of the Senior Center that's right across the street. What I'm trying to find out is how can we acquire parking for the active adult center? Because we're unable to retain members due to the lack of parking. And at one point, we did have parking that was assigned, but no one seems to know what happened to the assigned parking. And the other thing about the parking is that there is no handicap spot at all in front of the center. And we have several members that come and they are handicapped or they have vehicles that pick them up, which either have to park. Because most of the time, if you look across the street, that after site has parking. And sometimes those people are out there all day. And if someone comes with a van, they either have to park at either corner so that they can pick up someone because there's no space actually close to the sidewalk where they can pick up the people that are in wheelchairs. And the other issue I have to address is the coffin students that hang out at the parcade across the street over there. I feel bad for the two cars that are parked right there close to the building. You have anywhere from 10 to 20 students that hang out beneath the parcade right there where it's open at. And they curse. They're rude, they're disrespectful, they're loud. And they throw trash all over the place over there. And this is usually before school, between 7:30 and I think 8:30. And it's usually from 2:30 to about 3:00 o'clock. It's a mess over there. Thank you.
Chief, I don't know if you heard any complaints on...
I've seen them myself. I've looked at the school resource officer. So before and after, instead of staying in the building, he could be out here.
The handicap parking, I know that's been an issue there for a while. We've talked about it before.
It's an administrative pole of the downtown area.
I know they've struggled with it. I don't know what the solution is. I don't remember them having their own parking up in the drop-off area out there.
We moved signs, added different signs. Depends on what the administration would like to do.
There is... Parking is not something you can easily create there. Anybody else? Bob Calabaski?
Chief, if you pick me up and carry me out, watch my right side. Get me out the left, I'm just carrying you right.
Evening.
Good evening. I'd like to ask the mayor a few questions for council. Is he here?
I don't think so, Bob.
How many more meetings till this budget or whatever we're gonna do with this tax increase? How many more meetings?
Two sets, I believe, huh?
Two? What I'm gonna ask, Bill, if I could have extended time at maybe the next meeting to lay out, especially for the new members of council, what has basically gone on here for 26 years? How we got to this point with some of the things that have happened? I was at a meeting last night, and not only there, but all over town. People are outraged, outraged. About $26,146 a year for health coverage for Tony George, outraged. And I mean totally outraged. And I wanna... This is a very, very important issue. As you heard other taxpayers say the complaints they have. How much more could the taxpayers pay? This is the first time that all my taxes are paid in 12 years, 10 months, and 16 days. And now you want to come back for more. And what he has done is turned this administration into give all his friends jobs, handing these jobs out to all his friends. But yet, we're gonna have a tax increase. And what I'd like to do is have some extended time to put a little show on here to show what happened. This all started 26 years ago with Lean Amy. And they never gave the tax... The taxpayers have no say in when even council or the mayor gets a raise. It pays to give the city employees a raise. Then council and the mayor get a raise. And I don't know what council's plans are this year for a raise, if these are gonna take it. And this healthcare is outrageous. I mean, I think Mike Belishko is doing a good job as a councilman, but it sickens me that he's taking healthcare. I can't afford... I can't even afford it. I can't afford pants right now. But I want to know, is there a way that I could have some extended time at the next meeting to lay all this out, especially for the new members of council? And I think an important thing I brought up to you is at the last meeting was, how about writing a letter to the auditor general? And I told you, I talked to him on the L.A. Tyrone Show. And he basically was surprised on how it works. I mean, look at how many people that we have that worked here part-time. They are draining the pension system. Kathy Kane, Mangrenhausen, Lean Amy passed away, McGroarty, Layton. They all used that part-time service. Where Chief Lindaki had to work all the years out in the cold and Alan Clappett. These people count their part-time service towards a full-time pension. It's robbery. Robbery. What do we have to do to get council to write an official letter, send it registered mail, and ask or demand the auditor general come in and audit this pension? There's something wrong. And as I pointed out to you, there's people that worked up the public works garage for years till they got hired with no benefits. They're employees. They were employees. How do we... How does... Why do you let this go on? Tom Layton, right now, in 10 years is gonna collect probably $500,000. Don't let me disturb you.
Getting an answer for you, Bob.
Oh, okay, thank you. Tom Layton, in 10 years, will collect almost $500,000. Lean Amy collected hundreds of thousands of dollars in retirement and healthcare by working part... 12 years part-time and eight years full-time. There's not a business. Nobody could afford it. I don't... I'd like to... Some of these people that are probably here are living on social security. Look at Tom McGroarty. Eight years full-time, 12 years part-time. I don't know what his pension is. It's probably $35,000, $40,000 a year in healthcare. And yet, this administration wants to get give-backs from the unions. And this administration is a gift to the arbitrators. He has given all these jobs to his friends. Tom Menvarski, $50,000 a year. And he's on pension. How many citizens would love to have a job? Just, "Oh, hey, Tom, what's up? Hey, how'd you like a job for $54,000 a year?" It's sickening. And this is not the person that I knew. What happened to him besides the penguin twisting his brain, Tom McGroarty? And whatever's going on with John Moses? We had a perfect ambulance system. Now look what happened. So I want to know, what... Let's at least start... Now, other people had extra time. Am I gonna get beat up?
No, 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 we're listening.
Thank you. Let's start there. Let's start with this pension. And let's get the auditor general to come in. And just so you know, I brought it up before. I sent registered letters to them asking them. And this shows you the power of the corruption that I believe was in this building. You send a complaint into a state agency, specially certified mail. They never called. They never sent anybody nothing. Never sent an investigator up to sit down with me to say, "What is going on?" So I think asking an official request, at least let's start there. And also, is there a way that council could eliminate some of these jobs that Tony George has created for his friends? Could we start there? I mean, and I told you, I brought up... How do you think it feels for me to know? And I like Carol Smith. $70,000 a year to answer the phone with her benefits? Are you... Is this administration gone crazy?
Bob, I'm gonna stop you here, but I will answer some of your questions or concerns. You brought... The pension is audited by this... Correct me if I'm wrong, but it is audited annually. All the pensions. So those things are reviewed. I can't attest to the letter that you might have sent. I don't know anything about that. But they are annually audited to ensure that they do conform with all the requirements.
I can't hear you, Jim.
They're audited regularly, Bob. Every three years, I believe. And the auditors just had an exit interview last week, correct?
And they complete a full report, which...
All right, but here's the problem. Are they aware of these people who have worked here 12 years part-time? They... Hold on. They have worked here part-time and are getting a better pension than somebody who's worked here for 30 years or 25 years?
Well, we understand what you're saying, Bob. We do understand that. I don't know how much they're aware of in these audits.
They review every facet of the city's pension plans.
Right, but Jim, did somebody's...
They do it regularly, every three years.
Right. Now, other people had extra time.
No, no, we're not... We're just not gonna go back and forth. I'm trying to answer your questions. As far as council salaries, I looked at the budget. We froze the salary for council 12, 13 years ago or something like that. It stayed that way. I believe it is staying that way. Stayed flat for the last 13 years. So that's where it stands with the council salaries. I will consider extra time for you because this is a very sensitive issue. And...
I'm easy to get along.
We want to make sure that all the points are brought up. They are valid points. But I can assure you that this council is diligently working on budget preparations in conjunction with the city administration to ensure that the budget is fair and is workable and is something that is good for the residents. I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on that, but I do know that there's an awful lot of interaction going on.
Just so you understand, Bill, when I was supporting Tony George, this was one thing he told me he would take care of. And he's not taking care of it.
But as we mentioned, there are a couple more sets of council meetings.
Is there a way we could either subpoena him in or get a court order and bring him in here?
We're gonna let it go at that. But thank you, we appreciate your...
But you didn't answer the question. Look, and I'll finish on this. Will you send a certified letter and ask them to come in and look at that specific part of the pension? They are robbing us. Tom Layton is gonna collect $500,000 in 10 years, and he only worked part-time for 12 years.
That is the way the law is structured with the pensions. Correct me if I'm wrong with that. It may not be what you conceived to be fair, but...
Well, would you consider this and have an answer for me the next time? Would you please send them a letter?[1695.18]
Okay.
Let's, and I'll tell you what, for Thanksgiving, let's recreate that movie, Guess Who's Coming to Dinner.
Thank you, Bob.
Why don't you invite me down to your house for Thanksgiving?
All right. We'll consider that, too.
Thank you.
Philip Palina?
Hi, my name's Philip Palina. I agree with what Bob just said. I mean, there's a white elephant in the room, right there. All of yous are ignoring it. It's the pension, salaries, healthcare, all these are looking at me. The elephant's right there. You don't want to address the elephant, do you? None of yous do. And you're all to blame. The fire chiefs, the police captains, all these unions, they want pay raises. Everybody wants a pay raise. They don't want to give us, we're willing to pay a little bit more in taxes, but these sons of b- they don't want to, the unions don't want to concede anything. The fire, they wanted their birthday off. What, are you nuts? Birthday off? Seriously? You don't want me to pay for it? What, are you crazy? Last year? Retirement age. All this is in that big white elephant, right there. He's not going away. He's never going to go away. And you're going to raise my taxes this year, you'll probably raise them again three more years down the road. And you're all going to ignore it. There's the elephant, right there. None of yous want to look at him. Give George not a 30 mil, maybe a reduced one, I could handle that. But then, lay off the damn firefighters if you have to. Not the police. God, police don't lay them off, okay? Or the ETs, are all the firemen ETs? How's that work? I don't know. Arly or no? Can you answer that?
No, go ahead, continue, we'll answer.
Okay, whatever. Not the ambulance service or the cops. Because if my house burns down, I don't care. At least I can move out of the city. And alls are going to show up with their little hoses, and they're going to do more damage with the hose than the fire did. So if you ask to lay anybody off, lay off the firefighters. That's what I say. Because all they're doing over there, they're playing with their hoses, I don't know what they're doing right now at this minute, because there's no call, making chili or something. But they might be hosing their driveway, or cutting the grass, and then over here by the dog park, these people we're talking about, there's all kind of garbage there, but boy, it's pristine clear by the firehouse, because that's all they do all day. Clean around there, unless they get a call. Oh, hey, we got a call, guys. And I don't want my money going there. But if they don't want to concede anything, then I don't want to pay more in taxes. Now, especially with the overtime in the pensions, which is ridiculous. I know it went to the, what do they call those guys?
Arbitrator.
Arbitrator, yeah. Those idiots. Let them pay it. But anyway, are the captains and police chief and fire chief, are they salaried employees?
Yes, sir.
You got to be kidding. They're salaried employees, so they can get out overtime also, and then go ahead and...
Sir, I'm salaried, and I will come in.
Oh, you're salaried? I'm sorry, I thought you said you were... Okay, salaried, that's fine, okay. The captains and all them, they're all salaries, I hope.
The commanders, yes.
Okay, that's fine. Because the workers should be the only ones that are overtime. That's halfway fine. But like I said, I don't lay off any police, we need more of them. The firefighters, I don't care about, because like I said, if my house burns down, fine. And, oh, where do you park to come here? You park out here? Or, I don't know. I paid 15 cents, because it was quarter to six, so I paid 15 cents in the meter, because I probably would have got a ticket. But other than that, there's your white elephant. He ain't going away until you finally address him with these pensions, healthcare, and your salaries. And again, if the unions don't want to concede any little expense, to hell with them then. Lay them off. That's all I have to say.
I'm going to tell you something, and it's very difficult, it's very difficult. Contract negotiations are going on now. These are issues that are not the fault of this administration, and maybe fault is the wrong word, but pensions, salaries, benefits are all things that are arbitrated and negotiated. And over the years, it is what it is right now. But your comments about the fire department, I don't know if you've ever experienced seeing them work.
Yes.
But I've seen them bring...
Want me to come up?
No, no, I don't want you to come up.
Because I see it work.
No, we're not going back. I have.
Okay, sorry.
For decades, for decades. I think your comments were unfair. Your house is on fire, your family's in it at 2:00 in the morning, and I think we've seen these happen time and time again. To say the types of things that you just said about the firefighters is really not fair. Firefighters anywhere, whether it's the city of Wilkes-Barre, whether it's the borough of Forty Ford, or New York City, there's times that they put their lives on the line as much as any other public safety person. And I have seen it, and I know what they do, and I don't envy them. I really don't. And so, I just take exception to your comments here. Wouldn't you agree with their contract and those other issues? That's a whole nother matter. But to say that they just work around the firehouse or make chili, I think is really a very disparaging remark, but that's just my opinion on that. I just find that totally unfair and unjustified. Anybody else here?
Yeah, Alan? I take extreme exception to those remarks. It is probably the best, most respected fire department in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, if not this side of the Mississippi. I take strong exception to those remarks. These guys have averaged, I want to say, 7,000 calls?
Or more.
Or more? I take strong, I wouldn't want their job, and I've told them that. And to disparage their reputation like that, sir, is offensive to me.
Good. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else? John Sahoski?
Evening again.
Back. John Sahoski, I'm on the line. I'd like to know, I, first thing I just want to say, I'm against the tax increase. But if you guys are council or voting on it, I have a question, then. Which council members are taking the health benefits? Because like you're saying, you have a freeze on the salary, but I don't think that there's a freeze on the, like, you can't freeze healthcare benefit prices, and they're going to go up and up. I just think, I said it before, I don't think that the part-time council people should, you know, have health benefits. You know, how many of you guys have actual 40-hour jobs where you guys could get your benefits from there? You don't, you just don't need them, you know? You're just hurting the city. If you're going to, you know, vote for a tax increase and keep your benefits, that's a real issue. You're, you know, you're not helping the city out by taking those benefits. I'd like an answer on everybody on who's taking the health benefits. I'd like to know how much it costs the city to, per councilman, councilperson, what it costs the city. Because I really just don't think the city could afford to pay the council people's benefits, especially when, I don't know, I'm assuming most of yous have nine-to-fives on top of it, or, I think you're, Mr. Barrett's retired, but I just really think that something, that taking the benefits for council position, I understand you guys won an election and use, you know, that comes with the position, but you've got to be responsible with the budget, please, because, you know, we're going to, the city wants to raise taxes, the school board wants to raise taxes, and people can't afford that. Like, your tax, your tax raise isn't going to be as bad as probably the school districts, but it just piles up on residents every year, every year, and you, you know, my grandmother's 83 years old. If my parents didn't live in the same house as my grandmother, she would, you know, she would have been, she would have lost that house. Her health might have been worse, because she'd been stressed from trying to pay that. You know, it's not fair to the elderly residents who've been here, like, they left the older lady there. She's been here for five generations. Do you want to tax her out of her house? Because, you know, between this body and other bodies, that's what's going to happen, because everybody wants to raise taxes. I have an issue. Now, this issue, I don't know how to address this, because technically, this isn't in Wilkes, it's not in Wilkes-Barre, but it affects our citizens. Along Wegmans, the part that comes around Wegmans, there's always people walking there, and they're always, there are residents coming, going into the township. I know we can't do anything here, but maybe you guys might want to reach out to the township and see if you could put a sidewalk there before somebody gets hit, because the person that's going to get hit, it's not going to be a Wilkes-Barre township resident. They don't have any, you know, they don't have any houses there. It's all businesses there, and people from like Sherman Hills or that general area, or, you know, Cole Street, they're walking that way, and they walk, you know, they walk along there, and I just don't want to see somebody get hit. I can't go to address the Wilkes-Barre township, I don't know what their things are, but I'd like you guys to go take a look into that and try to talk to somebody from township, or, I don't know how you would handle something like that, but just get, see if you guys could talk to them to put a sidewalk in there along Wegmans, because it's going to be our, it's going to happen eventually, where people walk in the dark there, and it's going to be, it's not going to be a township resident that gets hit by a car. It's going to be one of our residents that gets hit by a car, most likely from Sherman Hills, somebody who doesn't have a lot of money, that's why they have to walk to Walmart or something like that. And it's something that just, I just want to prevent a tragedy there. And I'd also, where are you guys at with Martin Luther King Day? Like, I don't think the city hall, you guys are going to get it closed. I really would prefer you guys get it closed. I sat here quietly protested last year. I will come down here and protest again this year if it is open. But I think you guys should make, like what Angel was saying, like Angel Drew was saying, do something, maybe do something up in Sherman Hills. It'd be something that people wouldn't expect, be good for the city, be good for the residents, good for that section of towns, especially because I don't think they get a whole lot of love up there. So can you guys, just give me an update on where yous are with Martin Luther King Day, and everybody answer about the who takes benefits from the city? And if anybody knows how much it costs per councilperson, I would also like to know that. That's it, thank you.
On the Wegman, I'm going to backtrack a little bit. Wegmans, I will talk to Wilkes-Barre Township, but that is a state road there.
Okay.
That's going to be the issue there, it's up to the state to...
But you understand where I'm coming from, though?
Yeah, I go by there every...
I drive, yeah, I drive by there. I almost, you know, I almost hit somebody just because you can't see them.
Right. I will speak to the township and ask if they can contact, hand out to see if they can do a study there and see. It's not pedestrian-friendly.
Very unfriendly.
Yeah, Monday Street's the same way, Bill. Monday Street's the same way. I see people walk up and down Monday Street all the time.
Yeah, but at least, like, Monday Street, you could get out of the way, at least. Up there, you're just...
I'll speak to them.
I can say this, that I've been at several meetings at the Department of Transportation and don't know where this exact topic has come up, and they are looking at finding a way to fund that in the very near future, but it's a bigger project than you might think. It's...
Oh, there's hills, and yeah. It's an engineering thing, that's a big thing, I understand.
So it has been discussed, it's on the radar, but Councilman Barrett's correct, it's